Good evening, I'm calling the Monday, May 24th, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Our first item on the agenda tonight is the approval of tonight's agenda. Do you have any requests for changes to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I'm moved to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right. All those in favor approving the agenda, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda's approved. Moving on, we have the minutes from the meeting held Monday, May 10th, 2021. Do you have any request for changes to the minutes or concerns about the minutes? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second to approve the minutes? Sure. All right, and we have a second. All those in favor approving the minutes from May 10th, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Moving on, we have two public hearings this evening. The first is Holiday Convenience Store and Auto Care World Service Center, request for planned unit development concept review on 3.96 acres, planned unit development district review with waivers on 3.96 acres, site plan review on 3.96 acres, preliminary plat of two lots on 3.96 acres. Julie, I understand you want to speak to this one first.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair members of the commission. City staff found out that insufficient notice of the public hearing was provided to residents within 500 feet of the project area, so staff is recommending that you continue the public hearing this evening, and this public hearing would be re-noticed for the June 14th Planning Commission meeting, and all residents will receive notices of that public hearing. So staff asks that you continue the public hearing and that you retain your plans, paper plans that were provided to you for that June 14th meeting.
Thank you. Do you have any motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to continue the public hearing for the Holiday Convenience Store and Auto Care World Service Center.
All right, motion from Commissioner Kirk, do I have a second?
I will second the motion advanced by Mr. Kirk.
All right, second from Commissioner De Sanctus. All those in favor of moving the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, the hearing has been moved to next meeting. Moving on to our second hearing this evening, this is for Morimoto City Homes. It's a request for a planned unit development concept review on 2.84 acres, planned unit development district view with waivers on 2.84 acres, zoning change from rural to RM-6.5 on 2.84 acres, site plan review on 2.84 acres, and a preliminary plat to divide one lot into 16 lots and three outlots on 2.84 acres. I believe the developer is online with us, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Steve Furlong of Smart Fit Development is attending the meeting online this evening, and he has a PowerPoint presentation to share.
Good evening, Mr. Furlong. If you could briefly introduce yourself and carry on with your presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity to speak to you virtual. Next time, hopefully we can do this in person. Getting a little negative feedback, though, is that on your end as well?
We're good on this end, Steve.
Okay, maybe it's like the radio, just listening to yourself talk. We'll get back. Okay, so our subject site is in the blue circle here, right along the town road, and our goal is to rezone this as accommodate 16 units and have a site plan, preliminary plat. The RM 6.5 zoning designation will look at 6.7 units per acre, which would be under next slide, Julie. The site plan consists of four structures, three, four, four or five new buildings, each to be constructed with faith with, and a wetland on site is both decent assigned and will be to help indicate to the city. Central drive with hammered turnaround and new company of business offices, and some gas park as a design. Each unit will have two parking stalls and two parking stalls and culks. Julie, next slide. In order to support this project, we must be just to borrow from the city of Wilmington, the area we need to develop, there's the research on the area, that's the same many per acre, but limited to that space. So a few things do assume if site is purple, is of course, our lots won't have front. Our lots, our requirement of 3,000 per fee, and our lot depths, as the plan is depicted, only showing the unit's footprint, pat sides, ultimate area, and depth, a depth of 50 feet, and doesn't need to have motor park number 100. Main drive width of 24 feet, over requires 25, the reason for that is we want to have the least available surface as possible. And then our breaking walls are designed with 18 feet depth, which is over around a 19. And lastly, the usable open space, doesn't mean the dump per unit, however, we do want to equalize and maximize the enjoyment of the area to the west and include a woodchip trail around that space and a C shape there. And all these factors are to facilitate the affordable housing as planned, which is really the central piece of this development. And, thanks. So this gives you an idea for those areas specifically around the town. And the storm management area is such a, that we're, in our plan, we took green picked areas, expensive infiltration basins, make sure that we can capture pretty storm around site, and we're not using weapons to cover that. To note on the formal condition, we have submitted an application to the Purgatory River and Left Creek Watership District, and that application has been made approval. I'm just waiting on my application fee, a few other small items will be on the checklist. Right away, it's on the road with a what the district, an application. Next slide. I did conduct an interview with me, a group of people, a send out an application to five foot radius, a couple way from here, and so eleven things in eight days. A few topics that we talked about, there's some trees was appearing 51, and I did an open site in work rate, just doesn't mean on this site. And we walked this site, and we find some trees on the property, hoping that we can potentially save. Construction process, excavation will find determination, but we can save a couple of the trees. You could also want it to help the meaning, and so my pitch is to show you, if the plan stands as the meaning, that's the perfect, the light pollution in the, in the visual, best we can. I also had a question about property media, it's a, I, the owner, what is, heard about having a, and so I, for the difference, they're kind of media teams, or to, I have to say, my generally near with media was 700, it's worth the name here, and just, probably, at least, so. Next slide, Julie. So here's the landscape plan, you go through the requirements, we have, that option, we are planning to, everything we are, to the net set, we have a few heritage pieces on this thing, it may be salvageable, so we've accommodated for all of those planning. Next slide. Here's a visual from the, is it, looking, no. Next slide. This is a visual need for the proposed development, as you're entering the main, right? So first, like, are, right? Next slide, Julie. This is a view looking east from within the site, and we did, you find it's the facade, so there's updates in your pack. Next slide, Julie. So main component of this, we have people to accommodate, need a living, and this is a, this housing product in the market of American home. So this will accommodate a wide age of market segments from new households forming, new entireies, and everywhere in between. My goal in the base, the level of living, capable housing is, might be an option for existing, early home owners to find a new home within the city, and allows them to transit out their size to existing. And also, ability, being able to, so the parking, kitchen, dining, to the bathroom, all on one level. Next slide, Julie. And the second story would need additional, an additional bathroom. And next slide, Julie. So affordability being a key component of this, our goal is to be able to deliver affordable ownership housing at 115% of your median income without any subsidies. And currently, Minnesota, in the middle of that, are delivering affordable housing without subsidy, and an opportunity to do that at here. I've been working with this point, and the, to Scotts Ways, you can refer to affordability, and consensus is that we have a new improvement on some of the minutes that require buyers to meet income requirements and occupy the property, and the free property with, here's that, the current, we're at the same time. And we apply for help impact on, to help make the unit more affordable. And although we have a, the Minnesota housing purchase crisis, it's currently 455, my friends, 115% of the area is currently, I don't know, named, was any for families. Next slide. So more and more, in this explanation, what is more about, it's a tribute to a payment or this, that was state entered form, uses staunch advocate of housing and, of housing there's around metro state, and so this, a tribute to his belief that it should be affordable, not just rental. So, so this is a poster, affordable home, this, partnerships with Eden Prairie, Land O, and Minnesota, UGNC. Next slide, that's the end.
That's the end.
Any questions, I'd be trying.
Thanks, Mr. Furlong. Any initial questions for Commissioner De Sanctus?
Steve, Commissioner De Sanctus, one question I have at the outset regarding affordability, and you cited a area median income of 118,000, I believe, is that correct? You said, and I quote, "These units will be restricted to households earning approximately 115% of the AMI or less." Could you expand on that clause? Because as I read it, that gives a lot of latitude to cluster around 115% with no mandate to go much lower than that. Please clarify.
Commissioner De Sanctus, Mr. Chair Commissioners, the income limit cannot be exceeded. We cannot, however, restrict which buyers want us to, to purchase the property. And so we have to consider all of those on the first. Buyers still do need a qualification criteria for the mortgage, so they need to be approached financing and have sufficient income to be able to obtain property, to purchase the property. And so there will be a band or range to go from the minimum annual income qualify for financing to that maximum. And so the buyers would have to be within that range. What I think most often, most often occurs with these income restriction properties is that we have a name chose for all walks of life that apply, purchases property, these people, they're, they're typically priced low or good, so market rate, new talent developments typically would be passive. And so that attracts a wide range of buyer, and then it's, as any other traditional seller is considering which of those offers is the best. And certainly, the income restrictions that we would place for those people sold that need an income restriction over, is that not, how would that answer your question?
Yes.
All right, any other initial questions?
Yeah.
Commissioner Mehdi.
I see that the, the, the way that the front door was designed, as you're acknowledging, like, the practical front door is going to be the one next to the garages, which I like that you're doing, because I've seen a lot of those, you know, where the garage is on one side, the front door is on the other, but nobody's going to walk on this long sidewalk all the way around. But for the, well, I guess I'll call fake front doors, what's the plan for when you step out? Is there just a concrete stoop? Is there a larger patio? Do you step out onto grass? What's happening there on, at those exits?
Thank you, Commissioner Mehdi, Mr. Chair Commissioners, Steve. If I could, Julie, could I maybe go back to the visual slide, is that possible? The fake front door won't be a front door at all, it will be a patio door. And so when you step out of that back door, the unit owners will have an option of whether they want to have a concrete patio, I prefer a previous surface there, yeah. So a brick or paint patio, or if they want to add a deck. We'll have some specific association bylaws for what can be added on the back of each unit, but I believe that should be feasible, there should be an option there for what's a, of recreation area they want outside of the, so that is depicted in the plan, because it can vary by owner, but that would not be a fake front door necessarily, it would be, just like a graveyard, just a family patio type.
Thank you, and just one other quick question, and I think this might have been brought up in the staff report, maybe I read over it a little too quickly, because I don't recall what, what the conclusion was, but there, there was a mention of this kind of redesign, a little bit architecturally, on the, the true front door situation, where you have these arches, which I think look nice. But the one thing I, I can see here is that there's an overhang over the garage door, but not over the front door. And I know when you're coming home, if you have groceries, or someone's standing at your doorbell, to not even have that couple feet of overhang really makes a big difference. Is that something you had looked at with the city or considered?
Yes, Commissioner Mehdi, Mr. Chair Commissioners, we did change the front facade, so there is an overhang over the front door.
The real front door, or, sorry, the real front door or the fake front door?
The real front door.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, any other questions right away? Commissioner?
Yeah.
Commissioner Farr.
I'd like to follow up on Commissioner Mehdi's questioning about the rear yards, I'll call them. The property line for each lot is set approximately five feet from the face of the home, and it doesn't extend all the way to the southernmost or northernmost boundary, so there's a common area ringing the site. And the developer talked of owner's choice of what to do with that backyard, and so I think that's a slippery slope, and I just want a little more clarity about that. Can they put up a fence between them and their neighbors? If they put up a patio, deck, or otherwise, it's going past their lot, and what's that in terms of liability, or what that has to do with the homeowners' association? If there's a mowing and plowing arrangement, you know, are they supposed to get back and forth on that common area? Just, maybe just explain that in a little greater detail.
Yes, so, I'm sorry, Commissioner, Commissioner, is your last name?
Farr, F-A-R.
Commissioner Farr, Mr. Chair Commissioner, so I haven't yet worked with my architect, specifically what those patio areas could look like. What our intentions are, is a set couple of options that, with that lot we have, and the common areas, make sure that there isn't any type of challenge there for maintenance. And of course, the owners will not be allowed to improve beyond their lot lots, really don't think they have fucking feet to work with there. The best, now, Jack, into that, is think about apartment company, only goes out so far. Really, unfortunately, are limited amount of space to work with the high age unit, but you still have some area that you can have, that's a nice space, and yet, the common, of course, that is the.
Ms. Chair, I think that just needs more clarity. Well, at this point, you may not know, so maybe that's why it's vague, but I think everybody will want a backyard, and yet they don't own the backyard, and they'll want to do more than maybe what the homeowners' association might allow them to do. And I don't know if it's within our purview to press that issue any further, but it just seems like they're going to think they own it, but they don't. And, and it's, they're all three bedroom homes, so there's going to be kids, and that's their backyard, they're going to want to play there, someone's going to want to put up a swing set, a grill, it, you know, it's going to snowball. That's just my concern. Thank you.
Julie, will you take us through the planners' report?
Yes, sir. The applicant is requesting the approval of multiple land use applications this evening, including a rezoning to RM 6.5. The property is currently zoned rural, which is typical for Eden Prairie's holding pattern until development occurs. The comprehensive plan does guide the property for medium density residential, which allows a density range of five to 14 units per acre, so the project as proposed does fall within that allowable density range of both the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. The developers proposing owner occupa, excuse me, townhomes for the property, and there are several waivers that are being requested. Many of them, about half of them, are reflective of the type of townhome development it is, where what Commissioner Farr was just outlining, is that the ownership falls very closely to the foundation of the building and then common area surrounding. So the waivers relate to lot size and lot frontage, things of that sort. There are also waivers with regard to parking stall and drive aisle widths, which is something that the commission looked at at its last meeting, is an area of code that needs to be updated, and the changes that are presented with this proposal are consistent with the changes that are presented as part of those code amendments currently in process, as well as the group usable open space is another code amendment that was reviewed at the last meeting. As noted, the developer is including a, as a part of his proposal, affordability within the project. It is not something that the city is requiring, the developer is voluntarily providing that, and city staff continues to work with him on how that affordability can be maintained beyond the first owner. So for instance, the city's Housing and Community Services Manager and the city attorney are continuing to work with the developer about how to best reflect that, and what mechanisms to put in place as part of the development agreement. There are a few changes that staff is recommending be completed prior to city council review of this proposal. One is with regard to the tree replacement plan. There are several trees on site that are proposed to be saved, and staff is asking the developer to take a look at that plan to make sure that the appropriate amount of roots remain untouched in order to provide sustainability of those trees, as well as some minor changes to the lighting plan and the sidewalk plan for the site. Staff feels that all of these are fairly routine, and is comfortable recommending approval subject to those things being addressed prior to city council review. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Julie. Any questions for Commissioner De Sanctus?
Julie, this question may be best directed to Matt. Steve indicated that he had done a site tour with you. Based on that site tour, can you estimate the number of trees on the property? Also, I noticed along the walkway, abutting Hennepin Town Road, there are a fair number of either Scots pine or Austrian pine that look fairly healthy, and I'm wondering about preservation of some of the pine trees, and since it contains two wetlands in different sectors of the property, have there, has there been any study of any particular species, either low level plants or bird habitat that might be encroached upon or impinged upon in pursuing this development?
Mr. Chair Members of the Commission, as Stephen mentioned, I did walk the site with him. There are a number of trees on the perimeter, it's fairly flat, that should be able to be saved. So unfortunately, those were updated in the tree preservation plan, but not in the grading plan. The grading plan was, just kind of had a footnote that they would be, the grading would be adjusted on site, where we were talking as staff, at a staff level, that we would like to see how that's going to be adjusted to make sure that those would be able to be saved. As far as the wetlands, we didn't do any kind of, any site assessment other than the trees themselves, we're just looking at the trees and, and how we could protect those and be able to save those. So I wouldn't be able to answer as to kind of the, the other land material that might be there, but obviously a lot of those are being protected, so if there are bird species or anything else in those areas, those would be protected as well. And the pines along Hennepin Town Road, unfortunately, I can't find those on the plan, so those may not be significant trees, so not included on the plan, but most of that area will be untouched, so there's probably a good chance that those could be saved.
Other questions before we go to the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Commissioner, too.
Kind of a follow up to, to Commissioner De Sanctus.
De Sanctus.
De Sanctus has a question. Is there a plan? Is there plans to do any type of environmental phase one on the property to see kind of what particulars or what may be potentially there that, what you don't know, you catch it?
Chair, members of the commission, I believe one was been done, but I'm not sure that, but we will be able to double check on that. I'm pretty sure the requirement is at least an assessment if a phase one is needed. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Farr.
A few questions for staff. What's in the city's interest to own Outlots ANC?
Pardon me, can you restate the question?
What are the city's interests in owning Outlots ANC?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the ownership of ANC would be for, there's a wetland on both sites, so it would be for conservation of those areas, city-owned and maintained and preservation and conservation of those wetlands.
Okay. Can you just speak to, for our general knowledge, what's the, what's the cost to the city to maintain outlots like that? I don't know if that's an answer, in the unit of per acre or per lot, or does the city spend a lot of money every year maintaining those?
That might be a question for Matt, but most natural wetlands wouldn't require much. If it's a stormwater feature, then they do require more maintenance.
Sure.
But the one further to the west is a, is a natural wetland that I don't expect to be touched. The one on the east side is going to have some treatment to it, so that one, but most of the treatment is underground, and so that's just the discharge for that treatment area. So again, that shouldn't be impacted dramatically.
Okay, all right, thanks. Maybe stay up here for the next question I have. A couple for you, instead of going back and forth. The, the lack of access to a public way or a public street, how does this development compare to like the quad homes that were built 20, 30 years ago, where there's that shared driveway coming off of a public street, leading to the garages and front doors of quad homes, and that distant unit away from the street doesn't have access to a public way? Or were all those planted with a public way, but those aren't plowable by the city? How does that work?
Well, we haven't done a lot of these type developments for a while, but are you speaking of like the carriage homes from the past?
Like, half a mile due south on Mitchell there, off on the left, there's a lot of those, I call them quad homes, but is that what they're carriage homes?
Yeah, carriage homes usually have a, at least that was a kind of a marketing term probably, but it was a small driveway with four units on it.
Sure.
There's other townhouse complexes throughout the city that have private streets that are, that are part of a homeowners' association and a townhome association, so this wouldn't be much different than that. I think the, one of the differences, the lot sizes here, because they're just not much bigger than the foundation, so there's a lot of open space that's common ground that is unbuildable. So your question earlier about backyards and so forth, yes, that's a, that would be common ground and not owner, you know, owner's use of that property.
Right, okay, but you're okay with this being a private driveway?
Yeah, I mean, the pub, the water main is public, the sewer is private, and the street will be private.
All right, and the hammerhead that they provided at the end of that, that driveway, even with cars parked at both sides, that's enough for the fire truck to maneuver?
They provided the turning movements for a fire truck, and yes, they will, they will use up the whole road, but they will be able to go in and out of there as needed. And then part of that hammerhead is a, there's, there's parking on the, I think, just the north of the lead piece.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then, I don't know if Julie, you want to handle this one or not, but how does the city feel about no sidewalk on that length of driveway, going back as deep as it does?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as you'll see on your plans, there is a sidewalk that extends off of the trail on Hennepin Town Road, and it comes into the site about where that first visitor parking area is. Staff is recommending a condition of approval that that sidewalk be extended, at least to that first unit on the south side of the private driveway, in order to provide a pedestrian haven, if you will, outside of that private drive area. So staff has worked with the developer and are confident that he will incorporate those changes into the plan.
Okay, but, and you're okay with it stopping there and not extending all the way down?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. This is a public hearing, if anyone would like to come forward and speak for or against this project, please do so now. Good evening. If you would state your name for the record and?
Sheriff Pomerantz, I live at 9671 Clark Circle. I'm one of the adjacent homes to this proposed development. I, I have a couple comments and a couple concerns with it, and that doesn't necessarily mean I'm speaking in favor or against this, it's more of being one of the neighbors, there's some things that myself and some of the other neighbors have talked about, and we're just really to have a positive approach to this project, because the, the townhomes are definitely something that we would prefer to see in the location as opposed to an apartment complex. But the big, one of the big things at first was the trees, and hopefully, based on what was said earlier, that along the north side, especially since that directly abuts neighboring backyards, that if there's the potential, the ability to tweak things, to shift things, most of the trees that provide that privacy line are right along the, the property line. So it's not that there's this grove of trees that are 10, 15, 20 feet deep that we're asking to preserve, it's more, there's a handful of, of, I guess, heritage trees that are quite old, but they're literally right along, along the line. And so we're, we're asking and hoping that those, as many of them that can be preserved are preserved, because it'll have minimal impact on the surrounding neighbors then in terms of, of what, what this development would look like, especially with the backs of the townhomes facing that direction, it would be fairly low light pollution for the, at least for the neighbors, just traditional interior lights, no parking lights or anything like that. So that's one, one comment. There are a couple of concerns reading through this that we did not notice when we had the neighborhood meeting with the developer. On page, one item is on page eight of the staff report, under utilities. This was specifically asked during the developer neighborhood meeting about the need for any utilities to go through any of the easements in the adjacent properties. And the developer said that there would not be any need for water, sewer, anything like that going through the backyards, because that was another issue that the neighbors had had with the, the apartment, the Lost and Anderson Reserve proposal. I noticed now in the staff report that there is going to be a sewer main going through the north end of the property and, and meeting into the main sewer in Clark Circle, which the developer did not disclose to us during the neighborhood meeting, which is certainly frustrating to myself and some of the other neighbors. So I would like some clarification on that. The, one of the other items that was not part of the proposal to the neighbors, and I'm not necessarily saying these, this needs to be addressed, I'm just highlighting some concerns that I have that this was not disclosed originally during our neighborhood meeting. There's the walking path on the wetland side, which would be the west side of the property. That was also not part of the original proposal that was shown to the neighborhood, and so that is also new since we had the ability to talk to the developer and have comments addressed. So those are, those are two concerns that I have, that those were not part of the, the neighborhood notification that we had. And one final thing would be, I guess that would be on page, page three, just thinking about, and I'm not sure why it's set up this way, but in the hammerhead, there are the three parking stalls on the north end, and I don't see really anything on the south end, and since that south end more directly abuts the wooded area, I'm wondering if there's the ability or what the reason is that those parking stalls would face the north end as opposed to the south end. And if they flip around, that's just less, there's more opportunity to block those car lights at night if there's guests coming into the development. So those are my comments.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come forward this evening? I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing and continue the discussion.
I'll move to close the public hearing, sir.
Motion, Commissioner Higgins, do I have a second?
Second.
Second for Commissioner Kirk, all those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, public hearing is closed. Mr. Furlong, we did talk a little bit about the trees, but could you just respond to the concerns about the trees along that property line again, please?
Yes, certainly, Mr. Chair Commissioners, our initial plan was to go in and clear cut the scene and remove all the trees and start new planting. But after the neighborhood meeting and walking the site with Mr. Born, we did look for every opportunity we could find to save healthy, viable, preferred species and trees, and we identified a number along the property line that I think likely be saved, but it's one of those you don't know, but get there, it's a good chance, and where we need to actually build the proposed structures, and just how far into that tree root you would have to go in order to properly, on part of the site, so. Mr. Born and I talked about this last night, but typically if you go next, it could be more than a certain percentage, and Mr. Born could correct me if I'm wrong, but more than half of the tree root, it won't be, it won't survive, and so we're going to, as of ten instructions to our excavation team, be very, very cautious around that property line especially, and trying to vote in those tree roots as possible so that we can save as many of the trees there. So certainly, those mean as a developer who preserve as many of those trees as possible as it saves us dollars, we can keep existing reserve.
Thank you. Would you be willing to speak to the, I don't know, you're probably the best to speak to the parking stalls in the north end as opposed to the south end?
Yes, Mr. Chair Commissioners, so that's simply attributed to the delineation area for the wetland and our, our, the south end of that hammerhead can only go so far south if we can get to an edge line, and in order to have appropriate turning for a large enough fire truck or any other types of delivery vehicles, the only option is to put it at the north end of that hammerhead. I want to have as much as possible of the not creating parking issues and not having parking on the Hennepin Town, on the street, probably requires us to have no gas parking as much as possible, but I also understand the neighbors, light pollution, and so we definitely would have these reading and, and perhaps even a fifth appropriate at the north end of that hammerhead, that didn't light pollution for setting this up.
All right, thank you. Could you talk a little bit about the walking path?
Yes, so, thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Commissioners, there is always this concern about timing of the neighborhood, okay? You don't want to surprise the neighborhood and come out of it before lighting commission or anything, but then doing it too soon, things are fluid in that development process, things do change, and just as recently as the end of last week, lighting staff and I think we're talking about some different things related to the property and making some change, and so perhaps in this case, our neighborhood was a little bit premature, so it didn't handle its paneling, but in order to try near to 1,000 square feet of open usable space as possible, and a one or two stretches of wetland on site should be utilized for the, for the residents' joint area, so making that well, very accessible is one way that we can accommodate some usable space. So we talked about some different ideas, but a wood chip trail, be a pervious surface area, be minimally invasive to that area, offer an opportunity for residents to go in that space. The design is a siege, so it wouldn't be able to go completely around the way down there, so just essentially a small parking area for the residents to enjoy up there.
And then, I'm not sure, should maybe Rod speak, the city speak to the sewer main connection, or? If you would?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, yeah, what's being proposed for the sewer is a, a gravity line that, that basically goes down the center of the, the homes on either side, so right down the center, and then it goes into a lift station, and so the property, the force main that comes out of that lift station would go between those homes, and then, and then empty into a manhole that's on, in the street on Clark Circle. So the city would require an encroachment agreement to use that public utilitiesment for a private use. The, the main, the force main and the lift station, all, and the sewer line, the gravity line, all that would be privately owned by the association.
Commissioner Farr, could we follow up with that? This force main, it doesn't sound like this is a new issue, this was part of the last development proposal that we approved?
It was part of the last proposal, but it was at a different lot, it was at the next lot line. It was further to the east, so I can't remember the house numbers.
That's all right.
9681 or 71.
Okay.
I think it's between those two, but it was the one, whoever, whatever lot is further to the east, it was on the, on their common lot line of the neighbor to their east. So it was, it's just moved one lot line over.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, maybe just repeat, if you said this already, it's within a DNU already between lot lines on those single-family lots?
It's, yes, it'll be between the existing, or be within the existing, there's a 10-foot easement there, five on either property line.
Yep, so it's there already?
Yes.
Okay, and since the landscape plan for this development didn't show landscaping in the disturbed area of that side yard for those two neighbors, I don't want to expand the question, Mr. Chair, but, but I am, I guess, what, has the city been asking the development team to do something about the disturbance in terms of restoration to the satisfaction of the neighbors that isn't depicted in this set of plans?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the developer is proposing to directionally drill that all the way into the manhole according to the plans.
Wow.
So that, if, if everything goes well, there will be no disturbance of the street or their yard, but there will be a, obviously, an underground pipe that'll be there, you know, for perpetuity.
Okay, all right, and all this underground sanitary work, including the lift station in proximity to the wetland, meets all the wetland requirements, sanitary to wetland?
It's outside of the wetland boundary, yes.
It is, okay.
Yep.
All right, great, so it sounds like there was just maybe a communication issue between the developer at the time and the neighbors about the?
How it would work.
The sewer and the impact and the fact that it's going to be directionally bored, and I don't want to speak on the developer's behalf, but it sounds like maybe there's some communication patchwork that needs to happen there. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Farr. Other questions or discussion items for the commission? Commissioner DeSantis?
Yes, thank you. Steve, you reference sustainable building materials to be incorporated in construction, can you further define what you mean by sustainable?
Yes, Commissioner DeSantis, Mr. Chair Commissioners, our goal in all development Yes, Commissioner De Sanctus, Mr. Chair Commissioners, our goal in all development is to use sustainable renewable materials as often as possible. I don't have specific details for you on this particular project, but in the past we have used recycled flooring, carpeting, recycled paints. We've used recycled concrete materials. And so those are some examples of different types of materials that can be recycled. There's recycled trim material. The lumber market is rapidly moving lately. If you've bought a head of lumps on the market, and things would need to be, what came to me specifically what materials at this point change the price, they're changing rapidly. Lovers that up 200% now they're 30% less than one. And so at the time of the basic construction, buying instructions by a general contractor and our material supplier to give me options for renewable or recycled materials where possible, yeah, that's a reasonable amount of additional experience, we'll use those materials in lieu of, now renewables.
I have a follow-up question for you. Under sustainability, you talked about a partnership with XL with respect to solar power. What about the installation of electric charging stations in the garages?
Mr. De Sanctus, Mr. Chair Commissioners, we will wipe the property so that the solar vehicle charging, the charging apparatus in the garage is capable for the grid. I'm not an expert on the different types of systems, but I understand there are different types of vehicles. So we wouldn't, not all necessarily plug, you could pull it off the front wall, we could have the property wired today that could have only be charged inside the garage.
Okay, thank you.
Other discussion from the commissioners?
Was there, there were comments, I forget who asked the question, about the trail maybe coming as a surprise or something like that, and it evolved? Was the answer, I think I heard from the developer? And I think the term "C-shaped" was used, which to me means dead end. So it's kind of like the trail to nowhere. And I also thought I read somewhere that they were, the developer was talking to staff about the potential for some kind of an elevated deck above the wetland to get more usable open space. And I don't know if that had any traction, of course, but just taking those two ideas together, is there the possibility of looping this trail so that it's not a dead end, there's no point of destination or amenity at the, at the end of it to draw your, draw your attention to, to, to loop that by pounding in some micro piles or helicals through the wetland to get around in a circle and have no impact to the wetland?
Don't know if we can have the document camera. Got a very small graphic here, but essentially what happens if that trail, Commissioner, Chair Members of the Commission, sorry, forgot to direct my comments to you. The southern boundary of that wetland is on property owned by a different homeowners' association. So in order to construct a trail all the way around, this green is the current C-shaped trail that is proposed. This is the property line. As you can see, the wetland kind of continues to the south, so that property is owned by a different homeowners' association and not part of this development project.
I'm sorry, maybe I didn't phrase my question right. Stay on the property, cross the wetland.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I didn't understand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It's not ordinarily done, but the question was floated out, I thought, something that I read about some kind of a platform over the wetland. I thought that was an interesting idea. And I know it's been done certainly in nature preserves of all things, where people are invited out to see the wetland. And if in fact the purpose of the trail in the first place is to enjoy the wetland, why not? With minimal disruption, just getting pound some piles in there and have a little bridge across it and make it a loop for safety, for interest, for walkability. I think the dead end trail is useless. So I didn't know if that conversation happened at another level.
I'll just comment, I do recall an instance where our family, when I was a younger, younger mother, going to a place, much as you described, and it was very popular. And you turn, you just turn and go back, but it gives you that chance to have that other experience and makes it more appealing to go there. The kids always were running ahead from me to get there, so.
Specifically, you're saying the dead end isn't, isn't a bad idea?
No, it's not, it's a good idea.
Okay.
At least kid-wise, it seems to work.
Thanks.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gooding. Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Gooding.
Okay, I would, I think this is a very well plotted out plan. I'm normally not in favor, even if that's what I was involved, I think given the layout of the land state, I think they've done a really good job. I had some questions. And I think the city staff acted them and discussed it as, and I am very much in favor of the proposal.
Thank you, Commissioner Gooding.
Mr. Chair, can I weigh in and add my concurrence to Commissioner Gooding's comments? I think this is a very reasonable development for the property. We obviously had one that was a little bit too much for this piece of property. And given the infill nature of, of this property, I think this is a very reasonable development. And it protects the wetlands. And I, I too am supportive of this, and particularly the efforts for affordable owner-owned housing. You know, affordable housing is a, is a critical issue in the city. So anything that we're doing towards affordable housing, I think is a, is a positive step. And, and this may not be the biggest step, but it's a good one. So I'm supportive of this.
Commissioner Kirk? The discussion, Commissioner De Sanctus?
Yes. In kind of recapitulating my own position on this, I think it is a thoughtful proposal. However, I also acknowledge the concerns of the proximal neighbors with respect to the trees. And I'm not satisfied that a sufficiently detailed tree inventory has been done. And I have not heard any consideration of perhaps planting very dense bushes because one of the issues will be a sound buffer. And I think dense, for example, arbor vida, techni arbor vida, can become a very effective screening for noise and any kind of pollution that arises from cars going in and out of this townhome development. I also like the fact that this is a downscaled version of that original proposal we looked at, I believe in July of 2020, in terms of verticality, in terms of the number of parking stalls. I think it's a sensibly measured, has a sensible parameter for the given space. So I am in favor of this project.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Commissioner Far.
Similarly, I think this project checks a lot of boxes for me, too. I think it's creative, it's not like anything I've seen before. It solves a lot of issues. I, I like the density. I'm uncomfortable with the pedestrian flow coming in from Head Up in Town Road, to be honest. I don't like the sidewalk coming in and then stopping. These are all three-bedroom units. I think there's going to be kids. And although kids don't mind staying on the sidewalk, you know, they're mindful of that, I should say, they're going to want backyards. I think that whole issue I talked about has to be worked out, but in the front, they're going to be playing also, and just coming and going. The renderings show people on bicycles and things like that. And I don't think the street's going to be busy at all. There's, there's 16 units, traffic is going to be minimal. And I would much rather, since it's a private driveway, have something narrower for the car and dedicate at least some safe haven, four, five feet of pedestrian way down all the way, so that a child would feel safe walking by themselves. And I don't think they're that safe right now, but that's just my opinion. I, I'm not going to die on the sword on that, I just think that they ought to dedicate some, some more pedestrian space.
Thank you, Commissioner Far. Any other comment? Commissioner Meddy?
In response to that subject, when I was kind of considering this myself, I live in a cul-de-sac of twin homes that has 14 homes in it. And we don't have a sidewalk, you know, going around, so, you know, kids are playing in the street, car comes down, we drive slow and they kind of get out of the way and let you, let you pass. But just based on kind of my own experience, I, I, I don't think we need a sidewalk here. I think that's, I'm a little bit more in favor of just the extra green space that, that we can have without, without that sidewalk. I also think back to the recent development we proposed, which I think is off a valley view, I forget the name of it, but it was one, you know, one long cul-de-sac. And if I remember right, I don't think that they had a sidewalk and we kind of went through the same conversation, probably around the same number of homes without a sidewalk. So it's certainly something to consider. I think the question is, you know, where, when and why and where do we think it should and shouldn't need a sidewalk? But I, I think it's okay the way it's written here by just having it extend to that first driveway.
Great. Yeah, Commissioner?
I just have a forward-looking thought. If we go with the way it is at the stage with the sidewalk stopping at the, at the shorter point, and that's the way the development moves ahead and is available for people to live, would it be possible that the homeowner association? I just don't know legally what authority they would or would not have in the future to make that adjustment as they begin to see the actual living in the location. The thing that I said to the other developer, too, that's in the back of my mind is, what about the school buses? And it's just that, that shorter, you know, dra, shorter sidewalk area, the children are more or less on their own to figure out how they're going to get from where they get off to where they're going. And that can cause some difficulty for people, safety, in the safety kind of sense. So I, I don't know if there's an answer. That's my problem. And I don't know that that's part of the development process either. It's, it's a future kind of thing, but I don't know enough about homeowner association legal, you know, you know, whether they can create something and create an agreement and have an attorney draw up something and it's legally possible to do that or it's not. And I, I get that, too, so I don't know whether there's an answer. But the sidewalk issue is, is sensitive and I, I think it's real. Sorry to throw a clinker in, I just didn't want to say it.
All right, would anyone like to have further discussion about any of these items or feeling comfortable moving this at this point?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Kirk.
Move to approve, move for approval for a planned unit development concept review on 2.48 acres, planned unit development district review with waivers on 2.488, 2.84 acres, zoning change from rural to RM-6.5 on 2.84 acres, site plan review on 2.84 acres, and preliminary plat to divide one lot into 16 lots and three outlots on 2.84 acres based on plans stamped dated April 20th, 2021, and the staff report dated May 20th, 2021.
All right, a motion for Commissioner Kirk, do I have a second?
I will second Commissioner Kirk's motion.
Commissioner De Sanctus provided a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Would anyone like to abstain? All right, great. Mr. Furlong, thank you for your presentation tonight and continued working with the neighbors and the city on this exciting project.
Thank you.
All right, moving on this evening, we have any planners' reports?
No, sir.
Do we have any members' reports? All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting this evening.
I'll move to adjourn the commission's meeting.
All right, a motion, Commissioner Taylor, do I have a second to adjourn?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Meddy, all those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're adjourned, thank you, everyone.